Craig, you look better.
Thanks.
Let's go ahead and get the City of Jonesboro City Council meeting for October twenty eighth, twenty five called order, roll call, and we'll stand for the pledge allegiance and then the prayer of Reverend Reverend Hittkin and KD or whatever he's calling his name. But anyway, let's go ahead and have a roll call and do the pledge.
Rex, Eric, Gerald, and Greg.
Eric.
Okay, Brian, say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Before I pray, I'd just like to share that today is National First Responders Day.
Yes.
And just wanted to publicly say thank you to all our first responders, firefighters, police officers, for all the hard work that they do. That's right. Praise to Father, thank you for this day and for the opportunity to gather together as citizens of this community. We thank you for our first responders, for the police officers and firefighters and EMTs and paramedics and all those who serve on the front lines, working hard to keep our families safe in our communities. I pray your blessing on them and their families in this time. We think of those who have lost their lives in their work. We pray for their families, even comfort them and bring them peace. Father, we also pray for the events taking place here this weekend in Jonesboro with the Greenway. We pray that everybody will be safe and have a great time. And we pray your blessing on this meeting tonight, each one here, whether they're a citizen, whether they're an elected official, give us wisdom and understanding and help us to do our best to bring peace and prosperity to Jonesboro. All this we pray in your name, amen.
Thank you, John. Thank you. Yes, please. Squared, move along here. Item, item six, approval of the minutes for October fourteenth.
We'll have to table them for this.
Oh, here, one here.
Oh, that's right, you were here. We don't have a corner for you to load on this. Okay. We will table the minutes for October fourteenth, twenty twenty five until next meeting. Okay. New business? That's always from the board. First new business? Does anybody have a new business they'd like to bring up for the citizens of Jonesboro?
River Rally being negotiated or is it going away with it?
Yes. The River Rally is being negotiated kind of right now. I've been contacted by some other individuals and I haven't been contacted by the people right now, but I'm waiting for them to do their final analysis of what they're going to do and then we'll, then I'll make a suggestion to the board of which way we should go or not go. So they will make the decision. But it's kind of too soon right now.
Never too soon.
Never too soon.
Can't wait to deliver the hours.
Hey, you said earlier about Boy Street. You said somebody might be donating their stuff, if I heard right.
Yeah.
Okay, I heard you on there. You talking about dumping Boy Street. I was talking about that in CCNG.
Okay. We don't have any new business other than the proposed rate increase. But like I said, we're not going to talk about too much tonight unless somebody wants to, but we are on top of it. We are doing our due diligence and making sure we're going to do our best to try to provide a better rate. And hopefully we can do that, but if not, it's, it's, it's not going to be as bad as we thought, but it's still going to be, need to be properly handled by everybody involved, including ourselves, so.
We don't have a, that's not.
Don't know yet. They delayed for November eighteenth. The.
First council.
I'm not sure what, I'm not.
They're saying November fourth.
No, November eighteenth is when they're doing the public hearing. Okay, gotcha. So. Sorry about delegates. Anybody got any new business? No, we'll move on to old.
Old business?
Yes, I didn't even say something.
Trick or treating, five to eight, gazebo up here, five to seven. We still need people to pick up pumpkins if you want to carve them. We probably still have sixty back there maybe. So, we had one carter pumpkin, drop it off over at the gazebo a little bit ago. There was two of them. We're going to light those up. So, and then we'll be passing out candy and it sounds like hot dogs. So, you know, last year we had a lot of trick or treaters. We could use a few more people passing out candy. I think there's plenty of.
Only to say just last year was Earl.
Yeah, and I think Earl's coming this year too.
He said he was going to actually be up here instead of bagging them like he did last year. He said he's got a big tote, he's just going to bring him something. What he told me.
Yeah, now hopefully the weather cooperates. Last year we had to go to the gazebo, but I'd like to just have a line and chairs along the path. That way the kids can come right down the path, so.
Yeah, but last year they had walking.
It's not sounding too bad.
A little chilly, but, but.
You got sixty pumpkins? Has it six?
Well, we, we had a hundred, so I, I was estimating. We put them out yesterday and today. I'm estimating there's still sixty in the back room. There may not be that many, but if you want to count them, I'll go back there with you.
I was saying because of the pumpkin pie.
Yeah, somebody else was talking about pumpkin pie. Uh, the new police car, where are we at on it?
We're at it.
Yeah.
We set it off. It's on its way. Now, the one we, that pursuit we wanted was the one from Daniel, is that how you say it?
That's where it is.
It's forty thousand and it's sixty-five thousand. And I think, is that granting fifty, 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 forty-five or fifty something like that? Is it high or sixty-four is it a complete grant? Good question.
That is a good question.
We possibly could get one pretty cheap for a brand new vehicle. That's a person thing. I would get it. So Durango. And speaking of vehicles, we are advertising the twenty twelve Impala for sale that we have out there in the garage out there at the barn right now. We're putting it out for a bid. If somebody wants a bid on a twenty twelve police car, it runs and we need to get rid of that. And as soon as I get the title back to the Chrysler out there, we'll be putting it up for a bid.
You guys talked a little bit about the backhoe and what all needs to be done. You know, we had a session here six, eight months ago. We talked about possibly a mini excavator. And then Biggie came up and said, talked to me and said, I don't think that'll work for us. What do we really want? Do we want, do we want a backhoe? Will the backhoe do all the work? Do we need both? What do you, what do you, you and your guys think? Quentin?
The biggest thing with the backhoe, like this job back here, we had last Friday, the backhoe went, got in there. We had gas lines, we had the phone lines, we had all that. The mini excavator could just get in there and move around.
So what was Biggie talking about that we wouldn't be able to use it?
Yeah, I'm not sure why. I haven't talked to him. I mean, the backhoe you gotta have because that's the only way, well, mini excavator would load the trucks, but it'd take a while. I didn't know I had to talk to him. I didn't know he told you. I didn't know he talked to you about one way or the other.
We just.
Well, I heard over the last couple of years. That's why we called an outside contractor because they needed a mini excavator because the backhoe wouldn't do it. That's the way I took it. And I figured the money we were spending on a contractor, we was going to get a mini excavator to save that money to go off we paying a contractor. We could buy one.
Presumably Aaron, is that who we're talking to?
That's usually who we have come over for the mini excavator.
For this back here, it was fifteen hundred.
But I guess for me, I mean, we're talking about putting extra money in it and you're asking these guys to make a decision. I mean, and then I hear, oh, we need a new excavator or we need a new backhoe. I mean, what, you know, what do we really need for, that'll do the job? Or do we need both? I would hate to buy both, but.
Yeah, and that, and that's the thing, when you, when you talk to, probably can tell you when he worked here, you get a job that, George's was a good example. You couldn't get that backhoe over there in that ditch you just sank where the mini excavator was on the treads. You could get over there, you could do stuff. If you're out in the road, usually the, the backhoe will work. You don't have no problem. Getting the big backhoe off of some of the ditches and.
So then it sounds like to me we need to keep the original backhoe repaired like they just approved.
Right.
And get a new excavator, mini excavator. Will you talk to Biggie and see what your guys?
Yeah, I didn't know he talked to you about, so I'll talk to.
He stopped after the last meeting and said, that's not what we want. So it kind of shocked me.
Yeah, I'll talk to him.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else got any old business?
Just mentioning the two new ones up for. We are doing something different, a little different this year. We are not serving the beans and coleslaw. It's just, it's going to be a tenderloin, chips, Little Debbie or something like that. And we're reducing the price to ten dollars. Last couple of years it's been twelve dollars. But from a manpower point, it's just easier just to do the chips and the dessert and reduce the price. And then because we're not buying the beans, we're going to come out about the same, assuming we have the same volume of sales, so.
Now, it's from what time to what time?
Four to seven.
There you go, George, you're going up to Saturday night.
Thank you.
It should be cleared out for the parking, people to park.
Okay, anybody else got anything on the old business? I want to hit on one more point again, the, the, the cap does have electricity, so I guess I'm going to have James, Biggie, Henderson, put some lights on there. Do you want lights on there this year? Would you like to have lights on?
As long as things work.
Okay. We'll look at that. Why don't you, we talk about that.
Is the electricity act like?
It come in from over there by the road where the big pedestal is, comes into there and up underneath the porch.
Okay.
So the only part that you can really see is the piece that just goes out of the ground up. Everything else is tucked up underneath the porch.
Is that four pro, or four?
It's got four different plug-ins. It's a four plug-in style, so you may have to. You may have to run an extension cord if you want something at the far end, but there is four plugs.
Okay. Appreciate that. I don't have anything else on the old business, so we can move along. Is that all right? Okay, reports, Board of Public Works and Safety.
Water treatment plant project, we're wrapping up. Just a few items left on the, on the, on the list. One, one is a major one, which is tying in the south well. As you remember, those are being converted from a above-ground turbine to a submersible. So the buildings get tore off and a new submersible well gets put in and then tied into the new plant. So at that point, we'll be back on with the two wells tied into the plant, so.
Could that affect our pressure?
Yeah. The high, the two high-service pumps in the, in the plant themselves create the pressure.
Come from. Three people commented that they were having pressure issues, so I just thought that was kind of weird because they told me we had more pressure.
Yeah, I mean, the, the pressure should remain the same. I mean.
I didn't have it from my house.
I, I haven't either. It just shocked me that somebody, you know, I just said, hey, it's been on for a week. Anybody having, you know, a difference in the water? And they said, well, my water pressure's down, so I thought that was strange.
I mean, it's, the towers, the tower is still the tower and it creates the pressure, so as long as it's full.
We had the backwash now for three weeks for the last three Thursdays and I haven't heard any complaints, but.
I haven't seen anybody complaining. I'm just.
I have a question on that kind of going with the pressure thing. With it getting water and it's filtered and everything, somebody's got the old pipes. Would that cause it to, the pipes to corrode more to cause blockages or would it lose pressure?
Take that quickly.
No, I mean, the, the salt water is more corrosive, but we add a chemical to.
To keep that.
To, to keep that corrosion down, so. It shouldn't.
Biggest thing we've noticed where people have low pressure, check their aerators because they'll get plugged. We did have one the other day. That's all we, we took it off, cleaned it and they were fine.
Yeah. That's what I was going to suggest, but I didn't want to say anything until, you know, it will happen.
The Board of Works did approve a change order for work that has, additional work that had been completed as well as additional work, which was one of the main things was renovating the old plant, making it a storage, a usable storage building rather than just demolishing it.
Sorry, I don't, I mean, I got a lot of questions.
Go ahead.
The pumps, we talked about selling those at one point and you said you're going to give everything to the contractor, including the pumps?
So what I, what I advised the guys was there, there is new valves and pumps in the building. That we did purchase in the last three, four years. My recommendation was pull those out.
So we, we pull them out, okay.
Or, or they, well, they, they can pull them out, but we, we, they direct them to salvage.
We'll keep the pumps and all them new valves.
Okay. And we're going to hopefully sell those, right?
Or find another small city, I guess, that need, might need them for emergencies and stuff like that.
Okay.
Guess if you use those?
I don't know. I don't understand this stuff right now. Shoot. Well, these are some small ones.
I mean, some, some will have use for them.
Yeah.
The, the treatment plant, the two hundred thousand or hundred ninety-seven, you're down to one sixty-five, so twenty, what, twenty-two thousand, thirty-two thousand left over? Will that just go away? Will we not?
That goes away.
So can we buy like more salt or more materials to use?
Absolutely.
In itself, so as we get closer and we drill down on that?
I, I would, and I, and I would encourage everyone, as we draw this down, if you want to use it all, I mean, certainly yes, let's, let's do that.
Well, and we have spent money on a new camera system. Can we get reimbursed for that?
Yes.
Because that was about four thousand.
Yeah.
No, I mean, if, if we can get that and it's, you know, part of a big.
It's already budgeted out, so.
Then we do it. So how do we make sure that happens or what do we need to do?
Just get with me or the mayor and give, give us that list and we'll make sure it's included in the next.
But it's probably something Biggie needs to tell us, right?
Yeah, because he'll keep track of the salt and the phosphate and all that.
I'm going, sorry.
No, that's very good, Ray. Great question. Thank you very much. It's very good. And the cameras.
Cameras are up and working. Jim got them up a couple of days ago, so they are up and working.
We, we decided to get cameras because somehow one of the gates got left open and the lock's missing, so it just has to be a highly secure building and we got cameras and we're going to be watching them all the time. And we secured the gates and only certain people have keys to them now because, you know, I don't think terrorists will attack us, but guess what? You know, some people don't like us and, you know.
Needs to be secure.
It needs to be secure. And, and it, it's a nice plant. And I'm very proud of everybody doing what they did for it, so.
The other thing, Mayor, that I just reminded you, we need to schedule that ribbon cutting.
Yes.
Because they say when they're going to be done with the water plant, a lot of stuff they still got to do.
Well, I was hoping to get everything on the exterior graded and nice and they're telling me they're going to be in this week, possibly even tomorrow to start that, so I would, Mayor, if it's okay with you, maybe we can schedule that ribbon cutting as early as next week or do you want?
It'd be fine with clean.
Okay.
I got to check the bottom of that. Because he's going to cut the ribbon.
Is it ribbon cutting or an actual open house?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
So are you gonna, are they going to hopefully have the lab and everything built by then the tables?
They, they may not have the lab equipment in, but what my thought was is get everything cleaned and something because it's, it's, it's not clean.
When you say next week, I mean, maybe.
Maybe two weeks out.
Okay. Veterans Day would be a good day because a lot of people are off and they could do it like at four thirty.
Okay.
Well, I don't know if it's fallback time, but how dark it'd be, but Veterans Day would be a great day. I don't know what you guys think about that, but we're off work. But, but I want a ribbon cutting ceremony because I think, I think everybody's out there's worked hard for it. You know, our staff and you, and we've, we've worked very diligently on this, so.
I think people.
It's a Tuesday.
What they're paying for.
Absolutely.
And hopefully J.C. Knight will be down, huh?
Veterans Day is Tuesday.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would be.
Oh.
Yeah, it's City Council Day.
Okay, that's the best holiday. Okay, we'll talk. We'll figure out a date.
We'll get that, we've got that in the works, yes. The CCNG twenty twenty-five dash two, there are three streets that we're looking at submitting that is due on Friday. The mayor had mentioned we may want to add some sidewalks on Goodlook Street, so we may adjust that. If anyone wants to see those cost estimates, I have those. They, they may, they may tweak just a little bit with the sidewalks, but we're basically budgeting about three hundred, it's a three hundred thousand dollar project with the city matching seventy seven, I'm sorry, three hundred eleven thousand dollar total contract construction cost with a seventy-seven thousand dollar match for the city. So that would just be a, a mill and overlay with some sidewalks on Goodlook, so that's, that's the scope of it. And then J.C. Knight, I met with the contractor today. We're looking at just capping some of the sanitary sewer pipes that are sticking out in that basement as well as rerouting the, the water, the water meter, the water service that goes into that building. Other than that, then he said he's ready to start backfilling that hole as early as this week, weekend. I don't know if that works with you, but as early as next week, we'll probably get some dirt back in that hole and get that graded out, so. And his, his job should be done. And that's all I have. If you guys have questions.
Questions? Comments?
Do you need to use that dirt to spile it behind the new plant?
Problem is we're going to take it all the way around.
I know.
The fence wasn't there.
That's not real good dirt. That's got a lot of clay in it.
Yeah.
It'll be a good base.
For that, yeah. Not good fill, I mean, like for a garden or anything.
Yeah, so, so he will need to, having said that, there will be topsol to put on top of that. We're, we're kind of arranging that as well, so we don't want to just leave clay on the tops and that there.
Thanks, Brett.
Thank you.
I would like to make a comment, if anybody, about J.C. Knight. It's kind of a trivia thing here, but not trivia, but historical. They did find one of the original blocks down there. This guy carved his initials in it and it's February, or February. Help me out here. July fourth, eighteen ninety-five on the block. And that's the original building build date. And so when it burnt down in, say, eight, nineteen oh three, that means they rebuilt right over everything and used that block and then the block is here in the building. And I think it's pretty neat, you know.
Cool.
Somebody took the time, July fourth of eighteen ninety-five, to chisel their name in there.
Paul Billups or who was?
Me and George were there. So it, it's kind of neat. I, I'm sorry that J.C. Knight has won, but it, it's been twenty years in the making to get it accomplished and hopefully everybody understands why they did that. All right. My recommendations or comments from me are limited, so let's move on. Britain Treasury on fiscal reports.
Nothing?
All right. The attorneys are being real quiet tonight. Special committees. Want to mention one more time that we have a trick or treat candy pass out, five to seven at the gazebo. Please come help us with the young children. American Legion will be doing candy at the same time, so the kids can walk back and forth across the street. And then we will have a pumpkin contest and pumpkins are available.
I don't think it's a pumpkin, it's a contest, right? It's just, just carve them, but they'll be light them up this week.
So when we get done with the pumpkins, we'll decide what we're going to do with them. Moving along, approval of the claims for the general fund for the City of Jones, City of Jonesboro, now thirty-nine thousand nine hundred twenty-eight dollars and sixty-seven cents is in front of you.
I'll make a motion to set the point, just right.
We got a motion to second approve the general fund for the City of Jonesboro. Roll call, please.
Rex? Gerald?
Hi.
And Greg?
Hi.
Claims are approved. Public comments or questions?
I'd like to bring something up.
It's, it's done. If you state your name and your address for the record, you would, please.
My name is Lisa Buschman, four oh six South Water Street, four oh eight South Water Street. And I'm asking to vacate the easement between my two properties and from, it's like a hundred and thirty-two feet from Water Street to the back of the property, but not from the north and south to Main Street. I'm not asking for that to be vacated at all, just in between my two properties and that's it. I just got some paperwork, I'll get assistance to finish filling that out and I'll share it with you guys hopefully this week, end of the week. The reason for the request to vacate my properties is my autistic grandson and I have lived in and owned my two properties, four oh six South Water Street, four oh, South Water Street for five years. My concern is the safety and welfare for him, family and friends and myself during the time we're inside my home and outside. We have to walk across the easement to get to the other property that we use quite often. I have witnessed my grandson almost getting hit by cars coming from Water Street and turning onto the easement too fast, heading west between my two properties while my grandson was standing on the grass beside the house. Vehicles have almost hit my house, especially the section that sticks out, which is connected to my house and is the stairs to the basement. Part of the easement, the travel part is about eighteen inches from that part of my house. I have to park my yard, taking extreme precautions not to be standing in the easement when unloading my vehicles, groceries and et cetera. I've had utilities checked. I've had, and when I'm, I tried to fit this all together this afternoon. I've had utilities checked and all my sewage runs from middle of the easement to Main Street. Indiana code says an easement can be vacated with a sewage line through it as long as nothing is built over top of the sewage line. There was a water line that ran alongside the easement that went to the four oh eight South Water Street building. A leak sprang up at the end of the, the hundred and thirty-two feet from Water Street back. And that was part, um, the part by the barn. The leak was on city side. The pipe was severely corroded on my side. Utility employees asked me if I was ever going to run water to that building. I said no, so they capped my side off, so there was no water running through that easement. I support the Jonesboro River Rally, the vehicles speak through, said easement. They have drove through my yard, almost hitting my house. People don't care what they do to people's property and once again putting our lives in danger. I'm willing to close the easement off because of safety issues. I have dealt with and seen my grandson, and my grandson is mentally challenged on the spectrum. He sometimes don't need to look both ways before going to the other property. Sometimes I forget and that is usually when the vehicle comes flying through the alley. I'm glad to show you the area I'm talking about and how close my home and other property is to the easement. When I bought the property, I had no clue how irresponsible and unfair people were driving through here. Please consider closing off the easement before a life is lost, thank you.
What was that address again? Four oh?
Four oh six and four oh eight, right here behind Catman News. And I call them the brothers, Jane's Old upholstery Shop, the two properties right there.
So, it's currently an alleyway?
Yeah.
Yeah. I've got pictures I can show you on my phone, if you want, and lockdown, I'll be back and show you guys anytime.
So, how much traffic are we getting through there?
I get, there's several cars during the day, throughout the day. Some in the evening. Some regulars.
Just something we could put, the, where we have those things where we...
Traffic counters.
Yeah. Would be worth it, just to see how much we're dealing with?
Okay, sure.
That's not gonna stop somebody coming through there and hitting my house.
No, but it's not our public road, it's gonna be the same thing, and we can't shut off Water Street either, just because there're gonna be cars coming through there. So, for me, I'd like to know how much traffic we're talking about going down that alleyway.
But I, I talked with your brothers, because the FedEx and UPS guys were coming through there all the time, and getting real close to my house, and so he had, he talked to the, his regular drivers, and so they, they go north and south instead of the east and west, so...
Are you asking about traffic counters?
Yeah. Well, I see how much traffic's actually going through there, a week or two weeks.
And, uh, what do your neighbors think about you vacating that, or deciding to vacate that for you?
What do I think, what they...
No, what, yeah, what do your neighbors think? Can you talk to them?
Well, kind of sort in a roundabout way. Brenda says she'll never let that happen. And the two brothers, they not really said anything, we talked about it, but they never said anything.
So, the, the vacating the easement not only affects you, it affects them though, right?
Yes.
You know, because usually, just, if you vacate something, and you're giving it back, somebody's always pointing it out. Neighbor, where it gets his portion, and you get your portion.
I thought you said you own...
She owns both sides.
I own four oh six and four oh eight.
But it could be an inconvenience to the neighbors, getting in and out for their...
Yeah, getting in and out.
About fire department, any issues with you guys?
No, not until a fire happens. I, I can tell you this, we are looking at, and Brittany can tell you, we're looking at, what? Two, maybe three other alleys that was vacated, well, supposedly vacated years ago, but we can't find nothing in paperwork that said they could legally be vacated. They just blocked it theirself, and we're looking at reopening them because of that. And they are all between Main and Water Street.
To get people that come through there, that comes in through there just to pay the water bill.
Well, personally, I would like to see, I'd like to go over and check it out myself, to see what is really, how close it is to the house, and look at everything, and I'd like to see if, how much traffic goes through there in a week.
I know when I sit down that alley, it's really close to that barn, and I would avoid it, just you wouldn't use that barn. 'Cause I get a little close to it.
Well, I've never been down that alley, so I...
Yeah, I walk, chase me down there all the time.
Don't worry about my house.
Yeah, I understand that.
It's eighteen inches from the gravel to my house.
Gentlemen?
Yeah, I, I think we need to take a look at it. Yeah, we can action on it, we don't, it's important, action needs to be on there.
I've been down there.
We'll have to take our advisement, we'll have to figure this out, and we'll give her an answer.
I, I just, you know, I just wanna bring it up and get it...
Give it out there publicly, yeah. We appreciate it.
I, I'm, I don't know what to do at this point.
Does that impact River Rally?
Pardon me?
Vacating, uh, that easement, does that impact River Rally?
No, but it impacts plans of a Mexican restaurant I want over there, because it's, they're gonna use the backside of that building, uh, you know, for close maybe, but, we, but again, I don't know how much traffic that'll bring, you know? I mean, it could bring nothing, it could all come on Main Street, so, so... Yeah, me and Brad, we, have you had any contact with him lately?
I, I, I planned that this week.
Yes, good. But we, I advise you guys, uh, we, we're not gonna take any action, because she just brought it to us, and we got to investigate, and we'll get back with her, and we'll do it publicly. All right? Anything else from the... Thank you, public questions or comments? Seeing none, council comments or questions?
Don't forget trick or treat.
Yes, please.
Five to seven at the gazebo.
And, and turn the volume, even if you're not, even if you're not...
Yeah, even if you're not passing out, stop up, bring your chair, and watch the little kids, I'm telling you, we got a lot of people.
You want to say it again, if you're not passing out?
Thanks for clarifying that.
I don't want, uh, no comments from you guys, or from them. No, I'll make a comment, thank you for all you do for the community.
Yeah.
So, I think we, uh, we've done a lot of talking lately, and I've found out that there are some very good questions and concerns coming from the public, so, if nothing else, uh, Germans, move. Meeting of Germans.